I'm good.
You're good.
All right, please stand as we call the meeting to order for Tuesday, September ninth, with a pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections?
There are not.
To the agenda? Hearing none. Moving on to the consent agenda items.
Right, so in the consent agenda, you have your monthly claims. You also have the minutes from the executive session on August twenty-sixth and the minutes for the August twenty-sixth regular meeting. For personnel report, FMLA, we have Dev Adams, Financial Services Director, effective ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Leave of absence, Toni Jenkins, bus driver.
We can't hear about you. We can't hear anything at all.
Do you have a microphone or anything?
No.
You don't? Really professional.
Please do not speak from the audience. Thank you.
Are we supposed to be here?
No.
Is this a public meeting?
Please do not speak from the audience. We will speak up.
No. Come on, just be reasonable.
I understand, we heard, we heard that you need us to speak up. We don't need you to keep speaking, it is constant back and forth. We heard you. We will do what we can to speak up. Thank you.
I'll go back over for the board, the personnel report that you're approving. FMLA, Dev Adams, Financial Services Director, effective ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Leave of absence, Toni Jenkins, bus driver, Norwell, and she is effective on eight, should be nine nine, twenty twenty-five, but I will say Toni has returned to work, so, but that was leave of absence for the couple of days that she was out. Retirement's, Ked Hanny, second shift custodian, Osian, effective November third. Resignations, Deidra Stoppenhagen, high school girls head track coach, effective August twenty-ninth. Amy Crowe, bus driver, effective September eighth. Krista Alec, Osian, young authors co-sponsor, effective eight twenty-six. Robert Simons, high school theater director, August twenty-sixth. Connie McBride, Osian teaching assistant, effective eight twenty-eight. Kelly Caddy, middle school assistant swim coach, effective September tenth. Recommendations, Amy Young, transportation director, effective October sixth. And I just want to pause for a second. Amy's in our crowd here. Amy, would you just stand up and give a little wave? Amy has two years' experience as a transportation director, two years as a route, school route specialist and coordinator, two years as a dispatcher, and eight years as a bus driver. Amy is also a certified medical assistant, so Amy comes very highly recommended to us from Central Noble, her recent position, and just really happy to have Amy here with us today. Hattie Knoll is maybe going to come, but I don't think I see Hattie here. Hattie is Transportation Secretary, effective, actually tomorrow, pending board approval. Jennifer Flickiger, food service, Lancaster, September tenth. Macy Montgomery, student council co-sponsor at Osian, September tenth. Jeremy Davis, assistant wrestling coach at the middle school, effective September tenth. Cam Meyer, volunteer girls wrestling coach, high school, effective September tenth. Michaela Chishter, volunteer esports coach, effective September tenth. Bryce Wheeler, volunteer esports coach, effective September tenth. Grant Johnson, volunteer esports coach, effective September tenth. Isaiah Johnson, volunteer boys wrestling coach, effective September tenth. Jacob Miller, substitute food service, effective September tenth. Madison Ringer, substitute teacher, effective September tenth. And Lindsey Collins, substitute nurse, effective September tenth. Position change, Jennifer Ness, Transportation Secretary to Executive Secretary, that's Jennifer's former position. I just want to pause too, and Jenny's actually in the crowd here. Appreciate Jenny's effort over the last year and a half as we were making this transition in transportation, and that transition's effective September sixth technically, but we may be doing it a little bit quicker and more creative as we move forward. So that is the personnel report. We also have donations. Higherly Bakery, two hundred dollars to middle school robotics. McBride Bros., six hundred and fifty dollars to middle school robotics, and that's the consent agenda.
All right, do you have a motion?
I do have a question, just on the Transportation Secretary. I remember a year and a half ago, when the position was created, it was my understanding that it was because you were taking over, covering both roles as far as superintendent and transportation, and it's not my knowledge that we had a specific Transportation Secretary before that. Is that something that you feel like we are going to need moving forward?
Yeah.
Or is that something that the General Secretary could?
Right, and so I think what we found, and I think even before, I think there's improvements we could have made in our transportation, Stephanie did a great job, and I know that was a lot for her as well. And I know in the interviews, when we talked about that, how much there is to do in transportation, and really feeling like we need more support in that, in that role. I do think there's the difference between, you know, managing and being the administrator in the position, and then also the communications and the paperwork and keeping up with that. So obviously, I think it's necessary, and it seems like the committee thought that was pretty necessary, if you guys remember that, so, yeah, that's what I would say.
What did, when you say the committee thought that as well, what was the, what did the?
I mean, you guys can share.
Yeah, I did.
You were in that conversation?
Me?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, we talked about what would be the ideal staffing situation to make the department run smoother, and the secretary was listed from those that worked in the department.
Are they getting a CDL? All of them have CDLs, is that correct?
Who all has CDLs?
The secretary and the director.
Yeah, I think that would be a goal. The director already has one, which is really, really helpful for the director to have it. I think it'd be a good idea if the secretary has it as well. She doesn't have one right now.
Currently. But she's looking to get one then?
I'd be interested, especially since Amy is here, six months down the road, to have a report on the Transportation Secretary position, and if it's truly necessary. Obviously, we're trying to smooth over a lot of transportation issues right now, so more hands on deck is good, but that's not the only side of the coin we have to look at, so I think we need to have a follow-up, I guess, on that. And then on the position change, I know anytime people change positions, especially it feels like Jenny has had to switch positions multiple times. Like, is this the last time we're switching positions? And the reason I say that is because I want consistency for Jenny, and I think that consistency is what can help breed some of the ease of how the department runs and stuff. So is this where we see her long-term, or?
Yeah, so this is where Jenny had been long-term, right? And so, and that's where I really appreciate Jenny, I don't think Jenny was chomping at the bit to go into transportation, but was willing to help and serve and try to, try to help us make that transition. It was a lot, I think Jenny would tell you, and so getting her back to where she had been in a long time for us, I think is a good situation for her.
I know I rely on you a lot, so I'm glad you're there, and I appreciate it, but, yeah.
Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll second.
A motion and a second for approval. All in favor, right hand. All opposed? Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, one of the things that the board had asked for is to get regular feedback on offboarding, interviews with staff members of leave, and so Courtney Springer, HR coordinator, is here. One of the things we talked about, I know just even when we're looking at goal setting, was to do it more often. The problem with that, like, one of the things that's really important here is that you can't identify, when she shares this data, you know, it's anonymous data for the most part, like, they're not being outed publicly on what they thought, and so if you're doing it too often, and you know that only two people left, right, then it's, or one person left, then it would be pretty easy to find out what people said, so, so this, the information, Courtney, you're giving them is based over the last year.
The last fiscal year, so July first of twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
All right.
So we did have seventy-one employees that exited employment with Norwell Community Schools. Of that seventy-one employees, we did conduct thirty-eight exit interviews with them, and the chart does show, you know, based off their position, where they were at. So we did have non-exit interviews of thirty-three. A lot of them were like subs and coaches and things like that. We don't require everybody to do an exit interview. We really want it to be their preference that they want to sit down and do that exit interview, so that is a portion of the non-exit interviews. So when I do do an offboarding meeting, I'm the one that schedules that. If we have a certified employee that's leaving employment, I do ask Mr. Springer and Ms. Murphy to sit in on those with me. If it's a classified employee, usually Dev Adams and I myself do that. I do invite Mr. Springer and Ms. Murphy to those as well, but classified, Dev and I handle those. So looking at the, this is, you know, the exit interviews by department, who we did exit interviews for and who we didn't do exit interviews for. Again, like I said, subs and coaches, I, we just didn't get a chance to do that, and a lot of them, it's because they're doing other positions, so, you know, a lot of our lay coaches are working a nine-to-five job, so to sit down and actually do an exit interview with them is quite challenging. During our exit interview process, we do ask the same questions regardless of their position, just to make sure we're getting that consistent feedback. With the teachers and our assistants being the highest level of the people that exited from Norwell, I did kind of break it down. For the teachers, the three biggest reasons were career transition or new opportunity. Number two was family personal reasons, and then number three was they retired from Norwell, or they were a non-renewal or dismissal. I do like to mention that two of our retirees are now on our substitute teaching list, and then one of our teachers that resigned to for family reasons, the school district that she is going to is on a different schedule than us, and she's also on our substitute teaching list. So we do have those employees that are wanting to sub for us, which I think is awesome, so. As far as our assistants, the number one reason was non-renewal dismissal. As you remember, when we were looking at things, we transitioned and had some of our BSAids and LACPs get absorbed by our teaching assistant positions. I did have three of those people that actually were rehired from the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so even though they were considered a non-renewal, their position was absorbed, we were able to find them other positions within the district. Two was that career transition, new opportunity. We have a current student teacher that was an assistant last year at Osian, and we have some that, you know, just went back to school and stuff like that. And then number three was the family personal reasons, so it's not necessarily. So the next slide is the data that I collect from the actual exit interviews, so the first slide is based off of the building that that employee worked at, and then the length of employment, so how long did they work for Norwell? We did have twenty or twenty employees that had three or less years within Norwell, but I also want to point out that we had ten employees that served ten or more years, with six being fifteen years or more with the corporation. Reason for leave, like you just talked about, across the board, was job opportunity or education. The second was a tied three-way, retirement, family, and health reasons, and then the last was just not being a good fit, so that might be like the non-renewals and things like that. If you look at our level of benefits and compensation, so benefits is health insurance, dental vision, teachers, you know, we offer them the 401A and the Viva, which is what the corporation pays into those accounts. On a scale of one to five, twenty-three rated us out of five, and only three had a rating of three or less. So I think that speaks volumes that we are competitive with our benefits and our compensation that we offer our employees. The working environment within the building, again, no one rated below three, so I think that is, speaks volumes of the administrators and the supervisors that we have within buildings and departments, and nineteen of those employees rated it out of five, so. And then working environment within the grade level, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Again, thirty-three of those, thirty-eight rated us out of three or above, with nineteen rating us out of five. So that is working environment within the grade level, so second grade teachers with second grade teachers, custodians, you know, the custodians that they weren't under, and things like that. Consistent feedback, we had twenty-three of those, thirty-eight agree that they were getting consistent feedback, and then opportunity to work for Norwell, again, we had twenty-five of those, thirty-eight that were asked if you would consider coming back to Norwell, they said yes if they would. We had a couple of maybes. And then we had twenty-eight of the thirty-eight that would recommend a friend to work for Norwell. We had one no, and the rest were all maybes, depending on circumstances, so. So key themes, positive and negative. We'll go over the positive first. Things across the board, you know, I write down all the comments that they have to say about things, and then the top three, so fair and competitive compensation, recent improvements recognized, and then benefits favorable, under collaborative, supportive. It felt like it was a positive collaborative team environment, supportive leadership and communication. We had a strong professional development and cross-school collaboration, so I think that's evolving our, to our PD days that we do, and offering all the training and stuff that we did for, within the special education department. Environment, a sense of belonging and emotional connectedness, pride and professional fulfillment, positive work environment, team dynamics, and leadership interactions. If you look at the things that we need to improve on.
Sorry.
We did change the paytime off days for support, so that was brought up a couple of times, but we kind of made that in line, and know when we talked about the support staff benefit, and we had that as a change, really aligned with what our expectations were for our students, that we want them to have a certain percentage of their school, we felt that our employees needed to have that same thing. And then, you know, health insurance, I think health insurance is expensive across the board for everybody. Under collaborative, supportive, some employees, you know, general things, lack of support and guidance, low morale and leadership concerns, training and professional development needs, feedback and communication gaps, and then under environment, unclear expectations and role confusion, leadership communication, mentoring and evaluation concerns, team dynamics and cultures, and instructional and student challenges. So my biggest takeaways from this is, one, I do believe that we have an effective offboarding process. We are receiving honest feedback and working up those concerns to make it better. When we did the support staff handbook, a lot of the concern, you know, with the support staff was the rate of pay for our teaching assistants. We did increase it if they were life skills or in intense intervention, they get two dollars more in hours, and we did look at that. The other thing is, I do believe that we're leading the way among other school districts. I know that's one of Mike's favorite stories, is that when we went to IASBO, we went to an offboarding seminar, I started raising my hand and shouting out the things that we were doing, and then by the end of the meeting, I was surrounded by, you know, fellow business leaders within the state asking me questions on how we do our offboarding, so I think that speaks volumes. So, and then, you know, just continuing to make improvements, planning to sit down with district and building administrators on some of those comments that we see, and, you know, making up action items and goals to get better at what we're doing, so. Questions for me?
How many, how many employees do we have total at any given time? Approximate, doesn't it?
Approximate, including like subs, coaches.
Well, probably not subs, unless, does this include subs?
Yes.
Okay, then, yeah.
So maybe not coaches, just because they're usually.
The seventy-one that ended employment included.
Includes it.
All aspects, so on any given, we probably have twenty-three, three-fifty active employees that work for Norwell across the board.
So we're turning over twenty-five percent, give or take twenty percent at any given time? Is that fair?
This is a little high.
Seventy-one into three-hundred would be.
Oh, seventy-one, I thought we had thirty-eight on there.
Well, that's why I think we have to take the coaches out.
Well, yeah, that's.
The three-hundred, about the three-hundred and twenty, Corey, are employees that come to work every day.
Right, yeah.
And the coaches probably make up another thirty or forty.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at what we have, as far as like, every school, you know, coach, spring, winter.
Because maybe we, maybe we adjust it, so there's a couple of things, because I think you had said it's for the privacy. If we're sharing it this way, then yes, I agree, but I think we need to see it at least in the policy that we're going to work on at least quarterly, because I don't, like, once a year, I don't feel like I get a good feeling of why people are leaving, so I think it needs to be at least quarterly, in my opinion, of giving a.
We do like semester, like July to December, January to June?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's probably fair, unless, yeah, just more frequently at the very least, to say it out loud, and then we can adjust it if we don't feel like it's enough. And then you made a comment, you feel like the offboarding process is, I believe you said it's working, and so you can address some of the issues, and I know, I know you said some of the benefits are addressed, but how are we addressing the lack of support and guidance, the low morale, the training? Like, those, to me, are the things that are almost more important benefits we have. It sounds like our benefits are pretty competitive, so how are we addressing all of those? And I don't know if that's a big question.
And that's where, you know, I put that I want to start meeting with district level and building level administrators, because, you know, like, they see the same data, and I want to create action plans with them, because I'm not a part of the evaluation process and kind of learn.
Yeah, I guess I would just jump in, is taking all of it holistically, because on the, you know, on the other page, you see the, you see the opposite of that, right? You see supportive leadership and communication, so you see, you know, and, but again, it's, each person has a different perspective, right, when they're, when they're leaving, and a lot of things, I think, so two things on that, and I will answer your question, but, you know, some of the slides that she has in there, and the same thing with the comments, like, when they're saying, and the way that it's addressed, and we try to push a little bit to get people to talk, so we say, no, is there something, is there anything? So they say, well, I mean, we could use more support, right? So that could be how that was said, but, but also, when you look at, you know, where would you, where was that one at, but, would you recommend a friend, or would you want to work for Norwell again? I mean, those are pretty high numbers, too, right, in saying that they would, so, but I would say when we hear that, and it's drilling down, where was that at the building level? Was it at, from a district level in terms of professional development? It depends on what that is, and so we, so we talked about this as she was preparing this presentation, you know, do we need to, I mean, you could get too granular with this, but do you really drill down and say, and get people to say, you know, like, what exactly was the support? Because that's, that can be an easy statement, right? Well, I just think you needed more support. Okay, well, tell us more about that, right? And then try to, try to pinpoint exactly what the support is that we're talking about, and then you can address it, which is, I think, what Courtney is talking about. I mean, those are, those are good meetings, they're authentic meetings, and so if we hear something, we say, okay, what could we do about that? And so we have internal conversations, we talk to our admin team about it as well.
Well, I'm seeing a lot of one to three years, one, less than one year, one to three years was like your biggest factor, so I'm going to guess there are ones there, I don't feel supported. If I was guessing, that's what I'm going to guess, they don't, they don't, they come in, they don't feel like they're supported, and like, well, I'm going to leave, so I think that's really a scope, and then it looks like it was a lot more at OES, so.
I also think that we have a new generation of employees that we're getting, and those of you that are hiring, we do have a lot of employees that if it's not working out, they're like, oh, well, I'm just going to leave and find something else, and that's unfortunate, but we do have a lot of employees that it's just like, you know, I didn't, it just didn't work out, oh, well, I have more opportunities, and I think that's just like a generational thing, too.
I think, again, the drilling down part of it, because I know, we had done a survey about, like, our new teachers and how they felt coming in, and, and that was hugely positive, right? How'd you feel about the onboarding? How'd you feel about the support? But is it, so I think even drilling down to what category of employee group is feeling a certain way, and do we feel like we have a higher level of support for our teachers, new teachers coming in, but maybe not for teaching assistants, or maybe not for food service, whatever, I'm just throwing those things out.
So are we asking that question? Like, when they say, you know, the concerns, are we saying, is it, and trying to get them to talk, are they saying it's because we don't have a coach, a teacher-coach for me?
No, because all of our first-year teachers get a mentor teacher that works with them.
Okay, so it's.
So they answered your question, yes, we drill down on that, but it's not reflected in the data, is kind of the point, obviously.
Yeah, so what are we, what are we actively doing to address that? Like, I know that there's positive people, obviously, say supportive leadership and communication, but I'm more concerned that, you know, onboarding employees costs businesses a lot more than keeping employees.
Right.
That are pretty solid, so if we're losing a bunch of people and we have to replace them, what are we actively doing to address those issues?
Well, I can give an example, right, I can give an example, I won't say the departments, that's not fair, but one that I sent in, and I remember it was last year, year before, but had some comments about a particular department, and so followed up with that department leader, and had conversations about that, and even if it were a perception and not really the reality of what's going on, why was that a perception for that particular individual? And then we had conversations about that, and then how they would lead differently with that. And I've had different moments with me, if someone's saying something, and I'm hearing that, even though I know the situation was different, and maybe it's about district leadership, and that was their perception leaving, that I was, you know, introspective about that, and what things could I do differently and how I'm leading things, and so, so I think the answer to that, Corey, is we have conversations with people, because another thing that happens is somebody can come in and tell us their half of the story, and so if we immediately run then and penalize, you know, whoever would have been in charge, that's also not fair to them, because that's not the whole story. But I think having the conversation with people is the follow-up. That's what it's been.
Conversation with who?
Who, who it would be directed to, so if I'm in charge of a particular building, or I'm in charge of a department, or if it's within our office, or if it's me, whatever, then I have conversations with people and try to learn more, so, I mean, I can't tell you, Corey, every single conversation that we've had as a result of the meeting, but, and that's where I get into the, this data, this data is very broad, but to get down into the details of it, yeah, I mean, we can, we can think about how could we do that to give you more day-to-day that we experience every day, and it's going to be hard to do, we can try to do that.
I think we can start with the follow-ups, like, maybe have some meetings with the coaches that are, and see what's going, like, that's your job, or, you know, and pass it down.
Or the building leader, yeah, right.
But I, I think that's where we need to understand what's really going on, not just ask the questions, but actually put a plan in place, because when we lose, I think it's, if I did the math correctly, the one to three-year people is twenty.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's a lot.
Right, and we don't want to lose anybody, and I don't know if, if it's a perspective that's helpful or not, because it's, you know, it's all about your own situation anyway, but like when we did the, because that's real data that we can get from the state, but the retention level across the state for teachers and the retention level at Norwell, our retention level is quite a bit higher. It's not a hundred percent, right? And, and maybe it shouldn't be, I mean, not everybody's meant for the profession, so I don't know, it's always going to be a hundred percent, but, but I would agree with you, like, we want it to be, we want this to be a good place to come work, and we want to keep people, we don't hire people to get rid of people, so I agree with you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, the preliminary budget presentation and estimates.
Yeah, and Dev's extremely excited to be sitting beside me. Actually, you're probably more excited than I am, aren't you?
Yeah.
All right, so we do want to go, so this is prior to the, the budget hearings, and just going through the timeline again, we had our budget workshop on August twenty-sixth, September ninth is today, and that's our permission to advertise the budget, which is Form Three, and then the twenty-third is the actual public budget hearing, and then adopt the budget and the couple of projects and bus replacement plan on the fourteenth, and then submit to the, to Gateway on the fifteenth. And then adopt the budget and the capital projects and bus replacement plan on the fourteenth, and then submit to the, to Gateway on the fifteenth. So just going through education fund, uh, right away, those are the categories that, um, lead into our education fund and the final total. Again, that's state tuition, that's our, everything it makes up, state tuition, and that's based on our enrollments, our ADM, a day's membership. So you have the foundation, you can see over the years going back to twenty-twenty-two. So you do have from twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four, you saw an increase in what the state was giving, there was a nine percent increase in that. So one of the things to explain, so you see our tuition total, one of the things to explain with the education fund is the last two years, remember they said, passed the law, that we couldn't charge curricular fees for the families, that we had to cover that. But they did a grant, um, that you could get reimbursement for what you spent on curriculum. And so that's what we had, now they've done away with that, and they said, okay, we're just going to put it in the education fund. And so it looks like in the education fund that they've increased funding by four-point whatever percent, four-point-two whatever. But you got to take out the curriculum now that's in there, so it's really an increase of about two-point-two percent. You go the next year, it's actually a negative. Um, so just to keep that in mind as we're planning this moving forward. But you can see, um, so our advertised budget, and maybe you can't see this, because I don't have it on there, but, um, that's, what do we, what did we decrease that by? It was about eight hundred?
Yeah, we, we decreased it eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand. So, so we have some cutbacks to do. Um, and we talked about that a little bit as to why you're going to see that in, in operation as well. While we want to continue to stay aggressive with what we just talked about, with being competitive with salaries. And so it's continuing to look at, how can we, you know, have the best bang for the buck, the biggest bang for the buck? Top of that list are our teachers, making sure we have the best teachers in place, and we have been recruiting a lot of teachers from other school districts. And so that's where I get into a little bit of that conversation, Corey, that I think is also important. We're getting a lot of new teachers from other districts where they're coming from somewhere, right? So someone else is losing teachers and coming to us, and one of those things are, I remember, I have to get off track here, because it's a budget thing, but one of the things, um, that a teacher saw, just the things that they see happening in Norwell, they're excited about. But also, if the salary wasn't there, I don't think they would have come. Um, operation fund, proposed budget, um, eight-point-six million, and you can see that one. Uh, that was a decrease of, um, you know, just under about, again, about eight hundred thousand, um, from what we did last year. And again, continuing to try to, to, you know, look at where, we've had a lot of things that we needed to do. Capital projects, not just with bond issuances, but just capital projects. So we've done a lot of work in the last four or five years. And so we're just looking at how do we continue to, now to scale back as the, as the game has changed a little bit. Um, other anticipated budgets, uh, debt service, um, referendum, debt service, and then rainy day. So rainy day is in there in terms of what's appropriated, and for that, that's not saying that that's what we're going to end up the year with, but we have to appropriate it if we're going to spend out of it. And then one of the points I want to make here, when you look down at the property tax, last year, and I don't have it on Deb, if you have the exact number, but last year, we advertised, it was point nine-five something, I forget now exactly what it was. And you can see, once it went through the DLGF process, where they, they bring that down, it ended up at point eight-nine-six-seven. So our tax rate will not be point nine-eight-six-nine. Part of that is that debt service and how that amortizes and how that brings it back that way. So, um, but that's how you have to do it, and Chad Blacklock, who's on with us here for Stifel, when we get into the, to the bond issuance part, he can talk about this as well, in terms of how that process works. But I just want to be clear that we will not have an overall tax rate of point nine-eight-six-nine. Now, there's a chance it might be more than point eight-nine-six-seven, that's for sure. Um, and we've talked about that in public meetings already as well.
In, in regards to, since we no longer, I mean, we used to kind of set our tax rate, and we won't have any control over that. Does it make sense for that to still be a part of, because that's completely out of our control now?
Well, I mean, we, we have to do this in terms of putting the budget together, and so then it goes to DLGF, and then they set it forth, so it's, it's a part of the process.
But we probably need to get rid of that policy, because we made that.
Well, that was a resolution we did every year, and we're not doing it this year.
Okay, makes sense.
So, yeah, so what Corey's referring to, for those that don't remember, um, for the last two years, uh, we passed a resolution that, that our tax rate would not go over, uh, point eight-nine-six-seven. As we've been talking about with Stifel over the last several meetings, uh, the levy is what's driving budgets now, it's not being driven by the tax rate. All right, so that's the, any questions on the budget presentation?
Are there any questions on the board? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in regards to the budget presentation? Moving on.
All right, so we're ready, I guess, go ahead, if you can, second to hearing.
The next item on the agenda is the board, is for the board to hold a project and preliminary hearing on the proposed project. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure that you sign in on the sign-in sheet, which I currently have, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we will ask that each person limit their comments to five minutes, and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under consideration. The notice of this preliminary determination hearing was published as legally required. The first preliminary determination hearing was held on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. At this time, I will ask our board attorney, Nick Hirsch, to explain the purpose of the hearing.
Good evening, Nick Hirsch, Attorney at Schamrock S. Williams, representing the school board in Norwell Community Schools. Pursuant to Indiana Code Section twenty-dash-twenty-six, dash-seven, dash-thirty-seven, before school corporation may spend more than one million dollars to build, repair, or alter a school building, that will be financed by a lease or bonds, it must hold a public hearing. At which, at which time these explanations of the potential value of the projects to the school corporation community are given. Similarly, pursuant to Indiana Code Section six, dash, one-point-one, dash, twenty, dash, three-point-one, a school corporation must hold two public hearings and adopt a resolution to preliminarily determine to issue bonds or enter a lease for a project which has a total project cost of access of a non-controlled project. These public hearings and the adoption of resolutions at the very beginning of legal process, these resolutions establish the maximum financial terms of the proposed project.
All right, we will now hear from Superintendent Springer to explain the need for the project.
Okay, so, um, just wanted to go back, we had done this at, um, the August twelfth meeting. We wanted to go back to our last geo-bond and the things that we did with that. So we had, you know, parking lots roofing, flooring, pillars, that amount, the auditorium renovation, we really want to get in.
Can you sneak up a little bit?
Yeah, I can do that for you. Um, the auditorium renovation and intercom speakers, really looking forward to having our, um, one of our board meetings. We were going to have it here, this, some of these, I thought, you know what, let's make sure we're consistent on these hearings, so people aren't confused. But in November, I think, is when we'll go to the auditorium, I'm really excited for you guys to see, um, what we've, it's been long in coming, and, and making sure that our, um, our drama team and our, our performance teams have a nice environment to perform in, and, um, that's been a huge improvement. Uh, access control and, uh, security systems, so we're talking about access control into doors, and make sure that, that our building's really locked down in every area. Transportation vehicles and routing system hardware, um, again, really excited about that, that was this whole process we've been going through with kind of rebuilding our transportation system. I'm really excited, and mentioned this about Amy, uh, but Amy works with the exact same software that we work with here. She's been working with that, so I'm excited, uh, for, for her to bring that knowledge over to us. Uh, pool renovation, now, there's an example of why we talk about having some, some funds in there for operational capital needs that may come up. We had, we kept kind of messing with this pool and kept trying to get it to stop leaking, right? And stop losing, uh, water and having the bubbles come up and all this kind of stuff, and, and on and on and on. And we finally found the solution where, again, we didn't know it was possible, but you blow epoxy actually into the pipes and, and, and just a new solution. And so there was cost in that, but also just renovated the overall appearance of the pool that hadn't been done in probably construction of the building. And so, or at least of the pool. Um, but that was something that, again, wasn't necessarily, um, on our radar that came up. And so you're going to have some of those things. District-wide furniture, a lot of that also was with, um, like, the central office that we've converted here into, um, middle school, including even the special education, uh, central office spaces, that was phase three, I guess, that wasn't really included in the, the project for the middle school. Then general maintenance projects and services, professional services, um, all of those things, um, you know, to take the laundry list, to list all those things, but, uh, also, uh, was used within this bond. And then we had to go through and update all teacher and staff desktop computers, it's been a long time for that to happen. And then central office relocation, that's a pretty inexpensive, uh, central office there that, that we've done. And, uh, but that was also part of those costs. So we do have the remaining, um, six hundred thousand left in there, before I'd said seven hundred eighty-two, I believe, but there were some things that were encumbered in that, uh, that have been used that we didn't have off of there. So I was just getting a, a peek at what we did the last time. This time, things that we're talking about is, uh, Osian Elementary Inclusion Playground. Uh, we've taken on our special education programming, and right now, we have some of our kids with the most severe disabilities in wheelchairs that really have a hard time fully participating in recess at our elementary schools, and that doesn't feel good. And so, uh, we definitely want to address that. Uh, flooring replacements, we've talked about here, back when this, um, high school was renovated, uh, there's, uh, water issues, vapor issues, right, in the, in the concrete, so a vapor barrier was placed in that. Over time, that's broken down, and so now's when you start seeing the tiles coming up, and so that needs to be addressed. And so you'll see in the capital projects, like, the total one, so Adam Hecker, our funding, uh, facilities director, does the estimates on all this, and then gives that to me. So he has, if you were to redo all the flooring in the whole building, it's about a million to million and a half price tag. This is just taking and looking at the classrooms, which I would, would recommend that we take this in phases and then, um, add what we can do with the classrooms being the priority. Uh, bus replacement, we have seven buses that are at or over twelve years old, and that's after, over the last six years, we've replaced nine buses. So, and those are things just, again, there were a lot of things that, that happened, you know, even prior to my arrival here. One of them was paying down the pension debt, and so, which is all, all schools had to do, and Deb can talk more about that, because she lived it. Uh, but there were a lot of things that were put off, uh, in Norwell, just because that was a big, um, expense that schools had to deal with. And so I remember one of the first meetings I had with bus drivers, they talked about how frustrated they were with our bus fleet. And so we've come a long way with it, um, but we still, again, we have seven buses that are at or twelve years old. And why that number's important is you have to go through two inspections every year. Uh, so you have an inspection and a semi-inspection of those buses, uh, if they're at or over twelve years old. And then a new camera system on our buses, we have a very outdated, archaic, um, camera system. We have some bus drivers here that would probably nod their heads on that one. And that's just a safety thing, not only for students, but also for bus drivers, right, to what might have happened on a bus, and to, and it's, you also have systems, and I was in a school district ten years ago that we had this, where I could be in my office and monitor a bus that was out on a route. And so having that ability just, just makes everything safer, also having a camera system on stop arms and all that. All that is, I think, beneficial to making sure buses and drivers and kids are safe. Uh, bus parking lot construction, you notice I didn't have in the, in the, so the first few are the priorities. A central location for our buses, we do have bus drivers right now that take their bus, buses home. Some drivers can't do that, and so we either have it at Family Ford, or we might park it at a school. The bus parking lot construction serves two purposes, one, to have a central location for the buses. But the other piece of this is, you can't do, uh, bus driver training on parking lots that are accessed to the public. And so because this would be a private lot just for transportation, you could actually do some driving practice or training, um, practice on those, on that site. So, uh, I think that is of value, and talking with one of our trainers, our trainer, the big trainer back there, uh, for bus drivers, um, that would be a benefit. And then, then, so then, as you look through that, these are estimates, right? We don't know until we get into these projects, the goal would be that it's less than what we have here, but we don't know that until we get into some of the details of it and have people bid on it and where it comes out. And so, but you always want to have, and again, this is a general obligation bond, it's not a lease bond for, like, building the middle school. And so having in there the language that, to, to support additional capital projects. So when we say operation support, we're not talking about salaries, keeping the lights on, um, what is another example? I don't know, like, that kind of, those kind of operational costs, like, we're not talking about that. We're talking about things that would be capital in nature, that we would need to do out of the operation fund, and not out of a, a debt service project. And so, um, having those, there's, there's a lot of needs, and there's, really, I could, I could fill the page on, on probably another whole slide, if not more, of other needs that are out there. But these are priorities that we're looking at. Lancaster Furniture was not, um, renovated, their space was not renovated when we did the Austin one. That was just kind of by choice, as we had conversation with the staff. Uh, but that furniture's over twenty years old now, right, and it, and it does start to break down, and so that is something that we need to take a look at. Their playground could use a refresh, um, you saw that when we did the tour, the issues that we have with the mulch, um, having layered upon layer upon layer on that. Then the bus maintenance building, um, again, you could have the bus parking lot, that piece of it, without going and doing the, the bus maintenance building, I do believe, and we've talked about this, and I think a lot of people believe this, um, there's a cost, overall, long-term cost savings, if we had our bus maintenance building there, where we could just do the simple, uh, preventative maintenance type things for our buses. And we could even keep our partnership, and we've talked about this with Family Ford, which they've been a great partner, where they even do like a mobile service with us or something, but we would have a location where our buses are that could be parked in between routes, and we could continue that, uh, preventative maintenance. Byron's back here, so if you had questions, we could force him to the podium, but district-wide Wi-Fi and technology upgrades, I mean, it's, it's just an ongoing thing. And so when you're in our building and you go to try to use your phone and you have no service, um, you know, we could do things like cell boosters, which is more expensive, or we could just try to make sure that we have better Wi-Fi access, so you could, um, access the Wi-Fi through your phone. So that's the, that's the educational needs, um, with the project that we're, that we're talking about for this. So I don't know if you have any questions on that portion of it.
Uh, we will now hear from, uh, Stifel, Nicholas and Company Incorporated, our underwriter, on how the proposed project will be finances, financed as well as information about the effect on the typical taxpayer.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I appreciate you guys being flexible and letting me, uh, letting us zoom into the meeting tonight. Mike, is it easiest if I just share my screen?
Um, or you can tell me, they can, they can all see it in here, so if you want to just tell me where to go.
Okay, okay. Oh, perfect, okay. Yeah, if you want to go to that first slide that has the debt service payments?
Yep, got it.
Uh, so this slide just shows your, uh, current annual debt service payments, uh, for your corresponding bond issues, the annual payments that, uh, that correspond with each one of them. Mike, if you want to go to the next slide?
Yep.
Um, this slide shows the, um, your current debt service tax levy, uh, property tax levy, uh, with, that would align up with the previous annual debt payments. And this would be your exempt fund, uh, plus your non-exempt fund, uh, debt service funds beginning. Um, and so you can see the decrease in the current levy, uh, beginning in twenty-twenty-six.
I'm at the next one?
Yep. Uh, the next slide, uh, then layers in on top of that previous slide, the debt service levy, bringing in a potential twenty-twenty-five bond issue of two million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand in total cost. And that layers in, as you can see, that would be, we have right in, we have in there a five-year repayment. Um, again, seeing that it leaves capacity, uh, for future projects, uh, even after twenty-twenty-six, uh, due to the drop in the debt service levy.
Okay, I'm at the next one?
Yep, and on that slide, uh, this just breaks down the, the project cost, um, of the bond issuance. Uh, so total bond issuance of two million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, the school district would receive approximately two-point-five million, uh, for their hard and soft costs associated with the construction, or whatever projects, uh, the board seems, uh, deems that they want to do with the dollars. And then a hundred and fifty-five thousand would be built in for your cost of issuance expenses.
Okay, next one?
And on the last slide, uh, just some of the legal parameters, uh, that I need to go over. And on the last slide, just some of the legal parameters that I need to go over as part of the bond issuance. So total amount of the bond being two point five million plus estimated cost of issuance being a hundred and fifty-five thousand brings the estimated proceeds available to two million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. In the bond, in the resolution, you'll see the estimated interest rates being anywhere between two to six percent. Bond issue like this probably selling today is around the four point three, four point five percent range out there today. The maximum term of the bond would be up to twelve years. Total interest cost for the repayment around sixty-five thousand, that's at the six percent, the highest rate, the six percent rate. The maximum annual payment being one point six million, maximum tax rate impact being point one two eight zero cents. However, because of the previous debt, we have debt falling off, the overall net increase to the 2026 or 2025 debt service, 2026 levy being a net neutral or zero. School corporations' max annual payments as a percent of NAD, point five six percent, and the direct and overlapping debt as a percent of NAD being six point one percent.
Thanks, Chad. And you may have questions, but one of the things that I didn't say, and I probably should have in in my part, was when we had our, when we, going back in June, when we had our board work session, you know, remember, we talked about that time about whether just live streaming and pardon me wishes we we would have, but when Stiefel was here and talked about like reacting to Senate Bill One and things that Norwell needed to do and just that whole picture of that, that's where the idea came from in terms of the board authorizing more than just this one bond, right? Of just this one bond amount. It was authorizing that that we could, if we so chose to as a school board, do more later, and that total number was what, seven point nine million? That was not saying that the board was going to approve or pass seven point nine million dollars worth of bonds, like that's not what it was. It was protecting the school district for flexibility if the legislative goalpost just keeps changing. That was the idea. Now, again, we heard last board meeting from public comment that they just didn't like that, didn't like that approach, and so that's in conversations and with the board moving forward here and with Chad and Chad with individual conversations, but that's where this this, that authorization for to protect the school board from future legislation, we just took that off the table, and so we're just looking at one bond project here for this amount, and there was no guarantee that we were going to come back next year with another recommendation for a bond issuance as a as a board. That was just, again, to try to protect against future legislation, but but just to be clear, so that's what this amount is, just for one bond issuance, and that's why the amount is what it is, because that's what it would have been anyway. So I just wanted to add that.
I don't know if this is for Nick or for for Chad. Can we choose with how it's advertised, it's advertised at this at this number, if we decided that we don't want to do two point five, we want to do one point five? Can we do that, or do we have to?
We're advertising it with a maximum amount for for this bond project, so you could you could issue or sell bonds for less than that.
So what would we have to do in order to do that, another resolution?
It's probably a question for Chad. Can you hear that, Chad?
Yeah, yeah, I did. Some of that comes down to the timeline because we're getting towards the end of the year, but I think that is a great question. I think, I think what I would say the best approach to that would be, because we're planning to come back after this meeting, we have a thirty-day wait period. So if this meeting, you guys approving the bond resolutions or the resolutions that are on the docket tonight, trigger the thirty-day wait period, then our plan would be to come back at the October meeting and have you approve the final bond resolution. So the final bond resolution in October would have the final amount that you guys really wanted to issue in bonds. So I would say, Corey, that would be the kind of the final moment would be at the October meeting. We would want to know ahead of time if you don't plan to do the two point six presented in the presentation, if you wanted a lower amount, we could definitely bring back in the bond resolution to do that. As far as the documents that you will be approving tonight, like your local council says, that those are maximals.
Right.
So they're up to amounts, they are the final amount, so I think you would be trying to, Mike, you need to go ahead and approve those and then know that we need, if there's a different amount that you want us to bring back at the October meeting in the final bond resolution, that we can do that.
Okay, and then just to be very clear, because you know all the math, if we did something less than two point five, we would be, in effect, lowering the tax levy on all vote or all people within our district, correct?
Um, yeah, I'm just looking at my, looking at my map to verify, yes, you would be.
Because the two point five essentially just keeps it level where we have the last four years or three years, so anything less, in theory, should lower it, but we don't talk tax rate anymore, it's a levy. So, okay, thank you.
That is true.
I would add to that, if the board decided tonight to adopt a preliminary determination resolution, like a one point five million dollar figure, you couldn't, at a later point in time, increase the tax to two point five.
It'd go down, you just can't go.
Yeah.
That's why it's set at the maximum figure.
Yeah, the maximum rate and all that.
And it would impact the reimbursement resolutions for the school as well, so.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think it would be good to, if there is a conversation about coming back with a lower amount, to truly understand that impact, is it is it still weighted in year one where the actually year one wouldn't change? Or is there an actual reduction in year one? Would it still be over five years? Would we reduce it to three? Would, you know, like, I think some of those things would be, as we continue the conversations about what the amount, actual amount makes sense, so.
Yeah, I think that's a valid point, that, you know, that that could all be kind of layered into that to figure out, you know, if if the desire truly is to drop the levy, then in reducing it, we could definitely run some various scenarios like that that we could share with Mike, that he can share with the board between now and the October meeting.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions before we move on to public comment? All right. Thank you both. Have you stick around in case there are any direct questions. We will now move, or we will now open to the public hearing. Remember, if you would like to speak, I'll need you to sign in. As mentioned earlier, we will ask you to state your name and address. Please limit your comments to the proposed project and financing, keep any comments to five minutes, and avoid avoid being repetitive if possible. I have the sign-in sheet, so I will be calling off the names that are on here. I don't know if you were intending to speak or if you were just signing in because you came in, so if you're not intending to speak, when I call your name, just say no, and we'll move on to the next person. When your five minutes is up, I will raise my hand, if you please just finish your statement, your sentence, and then please find your seat. If there are any specific questions that were asked, we will address those. Well, we as the board will not address them, but the individuals that present it will. So going down the list, first on the list is Michelle.
My name is Michelle Sodervik. My address is 2416 Chestnut Court, Blackpool. And I just want to address you about the issue with the bonds. I feel like every taxpayer, every parent right now is faced with a lot of financial issues, considering tariffs, price of groceries, you feel it, and they're severely looking at their wants and needs in their households, and I think as a board, you guys have that responsibility to really look through things and see what truly are our needs versus what's a want. And that is probably going to make for some very tough decisions on your part, but I hope that you will do that work. Also, if you're moving money to operations for previous debt, that's expensive money. As a retired corporate accountant, that's long, that money was through long-term debt and bond issue with a lot of interest on it, and that's really expensive money to be used to pay off current liabilities. I don't think any of us would do that with our personal finances. I know that the county is considering eliminating, I think they've made the decision, they're going to eliminate the the remaining LTIC credit that is helping the residential taxpayers with property taxes. That is the thirteen percent credit. That's going to make a huge increase in the residential property taxes all across the county, so they're already going to see an increase for that. Assessments, if my assessment goes up and you leave your proper, your levy the same, my taxes are going up. I know you didn't increase the levy, but it's still increasing my taxes, and we're putting more of a burden on the taxpayers. You know, I'm retired, my kids are grown, but I know that some of these parents and families have to be having a really hard time supporting their kids, feeding their kids, paying all those debts that are associated with child rearing, and I hope that you will look very heavily at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Park. My name is Bob Park, Unit L in Indiana, my neighbor here, and I hope you can hear me. I know before you used to have microphones, that was Austin, you could hear very well, and I know the acoustics are pretty bad and muffled, so I hope you can hear me okay. But I just know it's it's my civic right to address the board, and I want to hear you, and I want you to be able to hear what I have to say. And I'd like to respond to the proposed bond issues. We have outstanding debt from previous bonds, such as the middle school, Osian project, plus whatever other. Endowedness by governmental institutions are becoming overbearing for the local taxpayer. There are other needs within our county that require proper funding, such as the fire, police protection, and EMS services are a few. Northern Wells Community Schools are vast in buildings and property. The three campuses at a guest would total about two hundred acres at least. That is a lot to maintain, let alone buildings and athletic complexes. We have to draw a line on expansion and frivolous projects. What the ratio of maintenance and educational needs are, I don't know. We need a freeze on projects during this tax funding time. Look only at the needs and plan now for future needs when funding's improved. With the taxation on property high, everyone has to tighten their spending, taxpayers and tax-supported institutions alike, perhaps even administrative positions taking a three-year freeze on salaries. I would wonder sometimes why accounting with three schools with relatively low enrollment has three superintendents, some with assistant superintendents also. Wells County combined probably doesn't have the enrollment of South Allen or Northwest Allen. Norwell this year, 2025, graduated a hundred and seventy students. I graduated from Norwell in nineteen seventy-one, and we had a hundred and seventy-seven graduates. With all the improvements and the rebranding, why haven't we seen an increase in enrollment? Rebranding of the schools was unnecessary, like necessary and costly. Rebranding of the elementary schools, colors, designs, change of names, rebranding the food service, what was the cost? Hundred thousand? I also noticed two small buses and a van that were redesigned. I can't say they are attractive. I don't know their expense or how they were funded. I don't see how any of these actions have improved or increased education or brought an increase in the students. I would like to see a five-year plan on projects that includes a bus garage is practical. There are other needs to be addressed. In the future, the pool will need attention. This brings me to staffing. Why don't we have a full-time classroom swim instructor? Many young people need to learn the lifelong value of swimming. In conclusion, I say no, I say no to open bonds, only bonds for designated, publicized projects, and don't pull funds from educational funds for teaching to offset maintenance expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Polly?
My name's Polly Weimer, at 7515 North 400 West Markle. First, I want to thank the board because I've heard a lot of good questions from you guys. I appreciate that, and I do want to say about the bond issue that, quote, the approach that we would prefer is approval for each need when it's appropriate. That is the fiscal, fiscally appropriate way to handle this, not to go into the expenses for bonds. And I think our board is very capable of appropriating money for that on the need basis. And I wanted to draw your attention to the fact that today on 200 Live News at noon, they announced that Indiana had a new testing implemented. The reading scores for twelfth graders here in Indiana are the lowest since nineteen ninety-two. One third of seniors tested don't have the basic reading skills. Only thirty-three percent of eighth graders who show proficiency in reading. Twelfth grade math scores are the lowest since two thousand and five. Now, I would hope that Northern Wells Community Schools has higher scores than that, but even if it's fifty percent or anything, these are really low, low numbers. And so having said that, stating that we pay, we pay as, he stated that we pay well as proof of teachers coming here for good pay, that's not accurate. I have several teacher friends, people come here because they think we're a rural school, that we have a better administration, that we have more kind students, cooperative students. If there, I have a friend who is in Fort Wayne Community Schools, and she deals with horrific situations there. There are many also friends of ours who teach at Christian schools. They will take lesser pay to come to a school where they're happy with their job, just like we we pay more taxes to live in the country, in this community, but we don't want to pay more taxes for for crazy reasons, basically. So if I read, if I read this right, we still owe six hundred thousand on the bond from 2024? Is that correct?
No.
What do we owe?
It's it's remaining proceeds from the bond.
Okay, remaining proceeds from the bond, so what what are we making payments on for that bond now? What are the payments?
The other guy.
I don't have it with me.
Nobody knows what the bond payments are?
I don't have it with me.
Okay, that would be nice to know in the information for this. Some of the things that you're trying to implement this bond for, I believe it's four hundred thousand for an auditorium renovation, yet we can't hear and are reprimanded here when we're asking to be able to hear, inappropriate. And if all of these repairs are needed, why weren't those considered before we did all these huge building projects? Why didn't we repair what we had before we finished all that? Why would you build a pole building on your property if your house was falling apart? That's a question. Also, a statement of, yes, the employees, on the total number of employees being three hundred and fifty, and you had seventy-one exit, I saw that eighteen of those were teachers and thirteen were assistants, ten of them, ten of which the teachers, had ten years plus in the corporation. What does that state? I mean, either they retired or they were dissatisfied. So and then also, I believe on the chart, we couldn't see the the key, color key numbers too on the screen, the orange ones were people who had a career transition or new opportunities. What does new opportunities mean? It means that they went elsewhere. They were dissatisfied. So things are being kind of skewed on on your charts and graphs. Also about the exit interviews, all of us have done surveys and interviews, and if they're exiting, they're in a state of mind where it's like, I just want to leave here. I don't want to leave with, did they leave, was it a private interview? Would, could there be repercussions if they were going to get, they wanted a reference to go elsewhere? Who does these interviews? And who sees the end product? Is it pri, is it private? Is it reported to the school system? Who's going to give them a reference? So a lot of this information that we've heard tonight could be interpreted in different ways.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Jan. Rick? Tim?
I'm Tim Baker, and I live at 2142 East 800 North Austin. Years ago, when you were going to build the Lancaster School, I was the Farm Bureau president, and you guys were, not this much, but the school board was having a hard time getting that passed. And the Farm Bureau held a meeting at Lighted Gardens and supported that project because they thought it was a real need. And at no time did we guarantee that you could maintain a tax rate. We thought you would do what was needed and then look at what you needed on down the road, not just while we're keeping the same tax rate, because our assessments on the farm is, just as homeowners have went up, and it's more money for us. So the projects you had up there at the bottom, you had kind of a fluff number on what you would maybe need, but there wasn't a designated project for it. Well, these people paying these taxes maybe need their money to pay things rather than just collecting money so you can keep your own, your basic tax rate, because it is more money for the taxpayer. So I encourage you to make sure them projects are all needed and not do any more bond than what is absolutely needed, if any. Thank you.
Greg? Nope. Okay. Amy, I assume you're not interested? Neither is your husband. Uh, Rick?
No comment yet.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then we will have you sign the sheet when you're done speaking.
Name and address, just one more time up there.
I'll allow you to ask a simple question.
Yeah, this is a simple question. The last meeting, there was something said about bonds in the future. Are there some more bonds being talked about?
No.
Or is this one, then, that just talked about maybe two or three coming up?
The original, well, I'll let, actually, you know what? I'm going to let Chad answer that question, so it's not coming from the board. And I think Mike kind of already answered that question, but.
Sorry, what was the question again?
So Chad, could you just walk him through what the point of the authorization was? It was not committing to bonds, but what was the, again, it was just an option that was presented by Steve while the June 4th work session. Talk about the rationale behind that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. What a lot of schools will do, they will identify a multi-year capital improvement plan where, you know, they'll identify a set of projects that need to be done around the buildings. It could be miscellaneous things like originings replaced, and we need carpeting in the elementary, and we need cafeteria equipment. Have prices assigned, you know, to the different projects, but then they decide they want to do them over a multiple-year span, you know, for whatever reason. A lot of times, it could even be that you can't get all the work done at one time. You know, a lot of times in schools, you've got to get everything done kind of over the summer, so you have a small span. So what a lot of times they will do, the board will approve a multi-year capital improvement plan with a detailed list of projects and costs associated with them, so it's not, it's not a random, you know, we just want to do a random five or $10 million. There are costs and projects associated with them, but they know they're going to do them over a multi-year span. So the board can actually authorize, you know, let's say, a $10 million, five-year capital improvement plan, but the $10 million in bonds don't have to all be issued at one particular time. They can issue the bonds over a five-year period as they want to complete the projects. So it's simply, it's simply a way from maybe a little more efficient standpoint for a school district to consider funding a multi-year plan. And I think that's all, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I think that that is the presentation that my colleague Lou did as a concept, because we have a lot of schools that do choose to do it that way. And then just everybody kind of knows, year by year, or every two years or whatever, you know, the board knows, community knows, superintendent knows, like, these are the projects that are being completed over the five years span of that.
But it wasn't, just to be clear on that though, Chad, it wasn't a commitment to those, it was an authorization so that you, you pass that threshold that if the rules changed, right, and they said you can't do any more bonds or whatever, which the board may decide to do anyway, but it gave the board flexibility was the reason for the authorization. Their authorization was not a commitment to whatever number of bonds. It was just an authorization so that the board had the freedom to do that if the need was there. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, when a board authorizes bonds, they are just authorizing that the school can move forward with the process of selling them, but they do not have to all be sold at one time or in one year or have that be done.
And I think, to answer your question, Bob, we are not doing that.
Okay.
We are only going, so we are only going to, right now, the intention is to only issue one bond at the maximum of 2.5. Last meeting, there was conversation about nearly 8 million. We are not doing that. It is setting the maximum 2.5 within the next. In the next 30 days, we'll evaluate whether it is 2.5. It could be 1, it could be 1.5, it could be 2.5. So we will be taking a look at need versus want, looking at long-term. I think a lot of us on the board are in, this is, you know, we are listening, we're hearing you, and we understand that we've got to, we, just like all other government entities, are going to have to look at tightening the belt, and we're going to do that. And so we are hearing you, so.
Can I?
Are you going to ask a clarifying question?
I want to ask that the board in.
The board itself is not going to answer a question.
Superintendent then.
You can ask one question.
So if you, if you don't do a bond, can you still put it on the ballot and let the taxpayer decide? Ask the taxpayer for the money and let them decide?
That's probably a Chad question.
Well, I mean, that's the, so you're saying if we're wanting to do a referendum, do we want to put that on the?
Yeah, can you put it on the ballot when people vote? Do you want to allow them to collect an extra million dollars for operations, whatever?
Right.
Can you put that on the ballot and let the taxpayer decide rather than you guys deciding here on a bond without getting voter input on it?
I can answer that. You can, it's typically for a higher financial threshold to put on a referendum, but that's a, there's a different process with doing that.
What is the threshold for that, you know?
I don't, I have to discuss that with Chris. Chris McCallum is bond counsel for Norwell Community Schools and site. I don't know the specific threshold for referendum, for capital improvement project off the top of my head, but I can confirm that with her, to Chad.
It just looks like it'd be more fair to the taxpayer, you ask the taxpayer rather than go through the deal like this.
You might also clarify what happens when a referendum is approved in regards to the levy.
Right.
So that's above levy, when it goes through a referendum.
Well, you're raising the levy.
We aren't.
No.
It would be lower if you didn't do this.
Assessments increase, this would maintain the same levy with, at this threshold, is my understanding from Chad. And Jim was at the last meeting and explained that.
If you didn't do this bond, it would lower the tax levy, and you could still put it on the ballot?
That's, it's an option, yes.
Okay.
Thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and your interest in the projects and the future of our community. Please note that this is just the first, technically second step in the legal process. The board will continue to work with administration and professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. Nick Hirsch, could you please summarize the project resolution?
Yes, thank you. The project resolution is required when a school is planning to spend more than $1 million per building. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction cost and the cost of issuance and establishes the total project cost. Some of that was within the presentation slide that Chad just discussed. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt the project resolution? Have a motion, second?
One second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, right hand. All those opposed? Okay. Nick Hirsch, could you please summarize the preliminary determination resolution?
Yep. The preliminary determination resolution is required when a school is planning to finance more than a certain amount for a given facility. It contains a total project cost, maximum annual payment, and lease term, and other financial terms such as the estimated principal amount and tax impact.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the preliminary determination resolution?
Yeah, what's different than the one we just did? Oh, that's just for the project.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and approve.
You have a motion? And a second. All those in favor, right hand. All opposed? Okay, 4-1. Nick, could you please summarize the reimbursement resolution?
The next resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which might be spent on the project prior to closing on the bonds. So in the instance where the board moves forward on a project, they can seek reimbursement from this reimbursement resolution from the G O. Bonds that are sold at a later date with getting that reimbursement. It is required by federal tax law in order to preserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the reimbursement resolution?
Yeah.
And a second. All those in favor, right hand. All opposed? 4-1. Okay, moving on to the additional action items, the 2026-2027 calendar recommendation.
So this was brought as a discussion item at our last meeting, and so Anna had sent this out, obviously, to our teaching staff and staff to get feedback and people like this, they really liked the fact that we moved school back, getting that extra week for school to start, getting away from what we kind of feel like is robbing a little bit of the family time in the summer. So that was, that went over big, so yeah, not really any changes substantive from the discussion, so just recommend your approval.
Are there any questions of the board in regards to discussions from the calendar?
Was there change that you found last time?
I think that was corrected.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. As long as that's correct, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on.
Oh.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to the 26-27 calendar recommendation? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand. All opposed? 5-0. The 2025-2026 Alive &amp; Well contract recommendation?
Yeah, so again, at our last meeting, Kelly Goody was here to talk again about the relationship we have with Alive &amp; Well and what they provide to the school system, and this is just a contract recommendation for this year.
All right, are there any questions of the board? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to this agenda item? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand. All opposed? 5-0. 2025-2026 Bright Point and Head Start MOU recommendation.
Again, this one was again a discussion last time, and it was Mindy Scheiman who did the presentation for these next two, so just ask them for your approval.
Any questions of the board? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to the Bright Point and Head Start recommendation? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand. 5-0. 2025-2026 Easter Seals MOU renewal recommendation.
Again, same thing, it was explained last board meeting to you guys, and just ask for your approval.
Any questions? Any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to the Easter Seals MOU? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second?
One second.
I want a second, though.
You get the next one.
Okay.
All in favor, right hand. 5-0. The last is the Norwell CTE MOU with Huntington Community School Corporation, Huntington County Community Schools Corporation.
Yeah, and I apologize, this was not brought to the last meeting for discussion, but we had to have our Area 18 meeting, and we just had our first one. We hadn't had the last one until July, and at that point Huntington was going to be the LEA and kind of run Area 18, and that changed from July on. So, but we had kind of organized a partnership with Huntington. We have a really good system right now. We're sending to Huntington and we're sending to Bluffton in terms of transportation. We saw kids participating in some other opportunities. But I was talking with Tracy Worley at the high school, and Kat has taken over a little bit more of CTE now, she's kind of shifted that, but Tracy has been the person. And so we do want to have a presentation at some point with the board to just show how much increase we're having in CTE participation. We're having more here on our site, and we're just being, trying to be more strategic on how we, you know, transport kids to different areas. And so Huntington's been a really good partner and just officially needed approval for the MOU for that.
Are there any questions of the board?
So what is the CTE? I mean, I know what it is, but. Career tech, yeah. So they. A lot of people don't know what it is. Career tech, education, and so I'm trying to, and I should have, I had it here in front of me, maybe I do have the paper. But we send over there for radio. There is some construction. We also have kids go to Southern Wells for construction. We have biomedical there, and we have fire rescue, and we're sending right now about 16 students to Huntington, and it's just a great program, they're a great partner. They have a really good precision machining class there, and Dusty Clifton, that was kind of his mentor in terms of implementing it at a school. Dusty's had a lot of experience with it, but they've just been a good partner with us.
So I wanted to ask, have they officially separated from Area 18?
They have.
They are their own CTE district?
Yeah, so they, so they've never really partnered, they just were part of the co-op. And, but there's other members within our co-op that do not send kids to districts within the co-op. So Blackford, for example, sends their kids to Muncie Career Center. Jay County has theirs in-house. There's some that have sent to Fort Wayne for things, so I mean, it's, this is not an uncommon thing to try to make it more efficient and get more kids participating.
I guess the question, so did they officially exit Area 18?
They did.
Okay.
They did.
That was the.
Right, but there was.
Because if they were still part of Area 18, we wouldn't need an MOU.
Correct, correct, correct.
And that's, I hadn't seen anything that they officially publicly exited Area 18, so that's why I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, they did, but there was questions that they weren't going to as we ended the school year, and that's what made this a little bit confusing.
I hadn't seen that they, that they, their own CTE district recognized by the state.
We do and we don't need an MOU.
You do, we do.
We do if we're not, if they're not.
We do because they're not a part of.
Because they're, oh.
Right, but they, so, yeah, just the long drama, real quick with that, is that they were going to, and then there was, there was an option where they were actually going to become the LEA, which is a legal education agency, and so they were going to become that, and John Trout is actually going to serve as the president, and then that ended up just unfolding, just unraveling and didn't happen, and so that made this a little bit messy timing-wise.
Okay. Any other questions? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in regards to the MOU with Huntington County Community Schools? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To.
Approve.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, right hand. 5-0. And then the.
Oh, you want to go through them, or you want me to?
Uh, go for it.
Okay. All right, so calendar events coming up, so we do have next Monday and Tuesday our Fall Conference with Indiana. So we do have next Monday and Tuesday, our fall conference with Indiana School Board Association and the Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents. So we'll be at that on Monday and Tuesday. September 24th starts our first collective bargaining session with our teachers, already doing, we can have informal, so we've done some brainstorming on how we can continue to, you know, provide for our teachers. September 23rd is the budget hearing from the information that was shared today. October 1st is a big day for us, that's the fall ADM count or enrollment count. Then October 14th is the 2026 budget adoption meeting.
Okay, we will now open the meeting for limited public comment. We will allow for individuals, the public, to come up and speak. You'll be limited to five minutes, just as the previous, again, keeping on to topics related to the education of our students and the district as a whole. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak during the public portion? Okay, hearing done. I will take a motion.
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Thank you.